Call this work session meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, May 7th of 2024. The time is 3:00 PM. Mr. Vino, please call the roll.
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a question present.
Okay. And we have, next item of business is our citizen comment timeframe. And it looks like we have a number of people remotely and some also in person. So our first three in this order will be Amanda Smith remotely, Elizabeth Bishop remotely, and Sarah Teal in person or remotely. Thank you. Do we have our folks ready, Mr. Vino?
I don't see Amanda.
Okay. Then let's go with Sarah Teal, who's in chambers while we get the other folks lined up and ready to address us remotely. And... The city council here says and comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. Those wishing to speak do need to sign up first, and there's a process for that. You may speak once during citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak about a public hearing topic that's on tonight's agenda, we ask that you not repeat the exact same comments again. And you have three minutes to speak. You'll see the timer. You'll start in the green. When you have see only yellow, you'll have less than 20 seconds left. When the timer's red, your time to speak is up.
Sarah Teal, 1112 Sycamore. I have already sent my comment forward to you. I wasn't sure if I'd be able to be here today, so the council has already read it. And it's in regards to today's research study that's going to be put up. Polling people from specific human service agencies to do a research study, the results of which will further encourage the government to award contracts and grants to those specific agencies seems like a design flaw in the structure of the research project that is being presented today that points heavily towards a conflict of interest. This same sort of research design flaw that takes weighted insight from the very people who stand to benefit from it also appears to exist in the recent youth assessment survey. This survey was also designed by the same sort of truncated group of self-benefiting agencies who are necessarily biased because the research outcome will directly affect their influence on public policy and the money that they receive from government contracts and grants. Has this research that's being presented today already been reviewed by Texas State's Institutional Review Board? Was the IRB board alerted to the project methodology that plans to recruit only participants that are appointed by a truncated list of community partners that stand to benefit from their work on the back end? Has significant financial interest paperwork been filed with the university? Have conflicts of commitment in research and sponsored program activities been examined? It seems to me that the current state of affairs is for the city to use the university's research department to legitimize handing certain contracts and government monies to particular human service agencies referred to as community partners and identified on page seven of the presentation over others by indicating them inside of a research paper that serves primarily to simply lay out their pre-existing objectives anyway. Thank you.
Ms. Amanda Smith or Elizabeth Bishop online?
My name's Elizabeth Bishop, and I'm online.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name's Elizabeth Bishop. I live at 800 North LBJ. I'm speaking today because I understand that the question of a ceasefire, of a call for a ceasefire in Gaza is important to members of the San Marcos community. It's important for me as a member of a university community ever since January when the Human Rights Group, EuroMedHumanRightsMonitor, said that forces had deliberately targeted academic, scientific, and intellectual figures in the Strip. I feel that this is an important issue to university communities writ large. According to the Palestinian Ministry of Education, the assault on Gaza has so far killed 4,327 students and maimed 7,819 others, while also killing 231 teachers and administrators and wounding 756. In addition, 94 university professors have been assassinated according to the same rights group. Many of these are internationally renowned scholars, and Texas State University had hosted a prominent professor of statistics as a Fulbright Scholar in Residence during the year 2015. The scale of deaths of students and educational staff in the region is unprecedented, according to the British Institute of Middle East Studies, as they say, "When you kill intellectuals of a society who is to narrate the memory of the community." The decimation of Gaza's academic community has been accompanied by the flattening of its physical educational infrastructure, and I think that this is important to us as members of a university community to recognize that the health of the academic community is writ far beyond one single jurisdiction. Most of the universities of Gaza are either completely destroyed or partially targeted. For example, the Islamic University and the University College of Applied Sciences were bombed on the 11th and 19th of October, with Al-Azhar University, the second-largest university in Gaza, targeted on the 4th of November, followed by the complete and total destruction of Al-Khutz University on November 15th. Videos circulated of the controlled demolition of Israel University on the 17th of January. This was the last remaining major university in the Gaza Strip, and these were circulated on social media. The building had been occupied and used as military barracks before that point. I thank you for your time and the attention that you've devoted to my presentation, and I turn my time over to you. Thank you. I return my time.
Do we have Amanda Smith? Okay. Our next speaker is in person, Kishra Khan, to be followed by Wayne Miller, Shay W., if you will come to the microphone over here to speak.
Good afternoon. Oh, wow. Barely made it.
State your name, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Wayne Miller.
Okay.
I am the grandfather of Malachi Williams, who was murdered in HEB parking lot by San Marcos Police Department. You may have a different term of murder than me, but I'm calling it murder until I can see what happened. We've not been able to see what happens, what had happened, and so we're requesting to be able to see the entire videos, a body cam. We're requesting to see the video that was in the convenience store and also in HEB parking lot. This has not been made available to us. I would like to speak directly to those that are in charge. I'm sorry about that. I want to speak directly to Chief Standwich, Standrick, ADA Cox, the mayor. And I want to let you guys know how this affects the community. You see, when we ask for something and we are denied that, we begin to wonder why. Why are we denied that? Family members denied being able to see what happened to their loved ones. I know that there are politics, but when there's a matter of life or death, and when someone dies by homicide, there should be some form of a trial. It shouldn't be left up to just one side to determine what all happened. You say, well, there's the ranger, and there's the chief of police, and all of these people are investigating. What I need is somebody that represents me to go in there and say, hey, what is it that I see? I need to be able to go in there and see what I see. We have the public afraid of the citizens, I mean, afraid of the police, and the police afraid of the citizens. We have, by doing the things that we are doing in this community, we've alienated each other. We have put the police on one side, we put the citizens on the other side because there's no trust. Police get up in the morning, they kiss their loved ones bye-bye, and they pray and hope that they get back home safely. Because they don't know. Is that bell ringing for me?
Yes, sir. Your time to speak is up.
Can somebody yield me just about 30 seconds?
No, no, sir.
We can't do that?
No.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Sir, we have another citizen comment time period at 6:00. If you would like to sign up for that at this time, you may do that.
I will do that. Thank you, and I'll be better prepared rather than running here at the last moment. Thank you so much, and thank each and one of you for just listening to my heart. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Shay W. Are they ready? How about, is Shanta Major?
I think they're online.
In the room or online? We're looking. I'll cycle back through. Shanta Major, Jan Williams.
They're all online.
And for them, there's another opportunity to sign up. Let's see. I don't, I don't see them. I don't see them online. Okay, Amady D. And Rodrigo Amaya. Okay, we may see them at 6:00 then. Okay. So that concludes the citizen comment portion of our program today, and next we will have, we have three items. Mr. Vino, if you will read item one, please.
Provide a briefing on a research study led and funded by Texas State University exploring a community engagement model that seeks feedback from communities historically under representative and city processes.
Mayor, I'll be abstaining from this agenda item due to my wife's appointment at Texas State University.
Okay. We'll see you shortly. Ms. Reyes.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today's first presentation is on a research project led by Texas State University in which the city has been asked to participate. This research project will study a community engagement model to potentially hear from some populations in our community that have been hard for us to reach. The model, known as the Equity Cabinet, will be comprised of members selected by participating community partners and nonprofit organizations. The focus of the Equity Cabinet will be on transportation and transit-related plans. The duration of the Equity Cabinet is five months. However, there is an option that it could continue meeting through early 2025. We have quite a bit of information to cover, so I'm going to turn it over to our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Coordinator, Ms. Gudisal Bedes-Carry. Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Gudisal Bedes-Carry, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Coordinator. I'm here this afternoon to provide a briefing on a research study led by Dr. Rosalie Singerman-Rey from Texas State University that the city has been invited to participate in and receive direction from council regarding participation. Dr. Ray also joins us here this afternoon to answer questions. Dr. Ray was awarded funding from Texas State University to conduct a research project entitled Piloting Innovative Community Co-creation in San Marcos, Texas. The co-creation model aims to involve community members who have been most impacted by inequality or traditionally left out of decision-making processes as early in the strategy-building process as possible. This research study is inspired by the success of King County, Washington Metro Equity Cabinet. The proposed research project aims to test whether such an intensive model could work in a smaller city context and focus on transportation and transit-related plans, such as the Transit Route Study, Sidewalk Maintenance Plan, Transportation Master Plan, and Americans with Disabilities Act improvements. With a desire to include neighbors that have been underrepresented in our engagement and outreach, the study will invite community members who fall within one or more identities listed within the executive order of advancing racial equity and support for underserved communities through the federal government to include Black, Latino, and Indigenous and Native American persons, Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, and other persons of color, religious minorities, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer persons, persons with disabilities, persons who live in rural areas, and persons otherwise adversely affected by persistent poverty or inequality, and individuals who belong to multiple such communities. Participants of the Equity Cabinet will be provided with all materials needed during meetings, a meal, and compensation through the form of a Visa gift card for an amount of $25 per hour paid for by Texas State through the grant. This timeline outlines some of the key points of the research study, which we will discuss in the next few slides. Outreach and recruitment are anticipated to begin in June, with participant selections being finalized in August. Once assembled, the Equity Cabinet will meet from September to January. Based on available funding, there is the option and opportunity for the Equity Cabinet to continue meeting monthly to receive updates and provide feedback from their perspective or lens as staff works through plans. A recruitment email will be sent to area community partners and nonprofits identified with information on the Equity Cabinet and an invitation to discuss in detail. The goal is that each organization interested in participating select a member, client, or employee that could speak to their lived experience, needs, and the work of their organization in order to have a diverse perspective represented in the Equity Cabinet. These organizations have been identified based on their work within the San Marcos community. The Equity Cabinet will be comprised of about 10 members. One or two members will serve as chair or co-chairs. Co-chairs will work with Dr. Ray to set the agenda and identify information that will be discussed, such as existing policies, processes, and plans, or presentations that will be helpful for the framework the Equity Cabinet will write. The Equity Cabinet research study will consist of 10 two-hour meetings over the course of five months. During those meetings, members will aim to build their understanding of the city's current response to transportation and transit-related problems and challenges, define shared group values, and discuss specific topics through small breakout groups or as an entire cabinet. Breaking into smaller groups could allow for five topics, while staying in a larger group will allow for three topics. Towards the end of the five months, the Equity Cabinet will work to draft equity framework document, discuss edits, and approve their framework to provide to the city. In efforts to capture the effectiveness of this model in real time, the Equity Cabinet members will participate in three interviews with Dr. Ray. The first interview will capture cabinet members' baseline opinions and understanding of the city's outreach and understanding of transportation problems. During the five-month cabinet experience, members will be interviewed on how the project is going. Exit interviews will assess their shifts in experience from their baseline. Another key piece of the research aspect will be understanding if Equity Cabinet members feel heard, seen, and valued in this process. Throughout the research study, city staff will be invited to attend meetings, to present and provide technical and background information, listen and answer questions. Additionally, staff will be asked to provide possible topics for the Equity Cabinet to provide feedback and recommendations on throughout the breakout groups or as a larger group. Though alignment exists to support the critical work being done to achieve economic vitality, support our core services, and advance environmental protection, quality of life and sense of place, and mobility and connectivity are more directly aligned with this research study. Beyond providing insight on the effectiveness of co-creation model, Equity Cabinet will provide staff with a different opportunity to engage with and cultivate new and existing relationships with residents and community partners. This experience and recommendations provided by the Equity Cabinet could be helpful resources we continue working to increase our outreach and community engagement across all of our processes, initiatives, and projects. As we explored the invitation to participate in this research study, there is great interest in the opportunity to expand the voices we hear from and the possibility of identifying some additional barriers to participation and engagement. It will also allow for staff, Equity Cabinet members, their respective organizations, and their networks to learn about transportation and transit-related components, city processes, and the lived experiences different than their own. Aligned with our desire for more voices and inclusive engagement is that of the federal agencies who continue to require and recommend high levels of outreach and engagement for grants. The Equity Cabinet serves as another example of a way that we are centering the needs and lived experiences of community members, particularly those who have been historically underrepresented and underserved. While we cannot say that the Equity Cabinet research study or model will definitively lead to additional grant funding, it strengthens the city's portfolio of outreach and engagement. A few examples of programs and initiatives that align are Justice 40, the Department of Transportation's Equity Action Plan, and Equity Council priorities. Additionally, through Drs. Ray, Jason, and Kim, Texas State submitted a grant application entitled Co-Creation of an Equitable Accessible Socioecological System in Quail Creek Park to the National Science Foundation for the Civic Innovation Grant. We anticipate that the Equity Cabinet's framework, the relationships that are cultivated, and the lessons learned from this pilot can be utilized to help define and scope of work, timing, and community engagement and outreach in the following plans that are ongoing and or scheduled for 2025. Additionally, the information provided from this research study will also help as we continue to work and strengthen our community engagement and outreach broadly. The Equity Cabinet's framework and information on the co-creation process could also be shared with our partners. Our next steps will be bringing back an ILA outlining the scope of project deliverables, responsibilities, and key parameters. Staff recommends actively participating in the research pilot led by Dr. Ray. And this concludes my presentation. I welcome questions and direction on staff's active participation in the Equity Cabinet research.
Counsel? The question before us is, do we want to move forward with this? Is your microphone on?
There it is.
Speak up, please.
Yes, ma'am. I'll vote for yes to go more forward on this.
It's not a vote at this point. It's just direction. Yes.
I'm okay with it as well.
Okay. Mr. Gleason, if you'll turn on your microphone. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, I'm fine with it as well.
Okay.
Dr. Ray is intricately knowledgeable about all the transportation and parking issues we have in town. It'll be interesting to see what they could come up with.
Yes. Oh, absolutely, and I thank Dr. Ray for finding an opportunity and sharing it with us. Is that a good way to put it? All right. We, I thank you very much for that, and thank you to the staff who's going to participate. Well, we'll see where we land on this. Oh, timeframe? Did I, I may have missed that.
Recruitment will begin in the summer, and meetings will begin in September.
End result, end times?
January.
Okay.
January 2025.
Less than a year?
Yes.
All right.
The research itself is five months.
All right, thank you. Sorry if it was there and I just missed it. Okay. Is there anything else? Ms. Reyes, do you need anything else from us? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bedes-Carry.
All right, then we will go on to item two.
Receive a presentation from Nancy Heitz with Point-in-Time Homelessness for Hayes County, presenting the results of the 2024 Point-in-Time Count of the San Marcos Homeless Population and hold discussion.
Ms. Reyes.
Each year, the Homeless Coalition of Hayes County conducts a point-in-time count to establish a snapshot of San Marcos residents experiencing homelessness. This year, that count was conducted with the help of local volunteers on January 25th, 2024. This afternoon, Ms. Nancy Heitz and Reverend Joshua Sutherland, co-chairs of the Point-in-Time Count Committee, will present the results of the 2024 count. Before I turn the presentation over to them, I want to thank them for the time and the effort they have spent on this very worthwhile project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Joshua going to get started for you?
Joshua's starting.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I am Reverend Joshua Sutherland, and as the paragraph said, I am the pastor of First Regent Church and co-chair of the coalition. We also have with us today, and wasn't mentioned, Stephanie Brown, who helped us with our mapping today, and she's going to talk about some of that when we get to that point. The Homeless Coalition of Hayes County is a group of organizations in town who are, and individuals, I guess I should say, who have come together to talk about, to collaborate together, to work together, to try to meet the needs of our unsheltered neighbors. And so there are, of course, lots of gaps in that right now, but we are working towards that. This pit count is something that helps with that. You have before you, just today, we've handed out some things that are important to you. One is a list of the organizations who are involved in that. That's just for you to know. Those are, and individuals who are involved in the coalition, our members specifically. And then, second, a member of the board members, should you have any questions, or look for people who you might want to talk to about things that are going on with the coalition. So, as the presentation said, let's see if it'll work. There we go. So this took place on, the pit count, the point-in-time count took place on January 25th, 2024, and it's the night of record as designed by HUD. So HUD says we have to do it on a certain day. We accomplished that to the best of our ability. So this time, we had plenty of volunteers and folks that went out and counted. And what that means is that there are, it's a count of people who are experiencing homelessness on this particular day that we can find in and around San Marcos and Hayes County. And so we are trying to get a snapshot of what the county is doing and what we're seeing around issues of homelessness in the town. And so that involves not just counting, though, it involves surveys and asking questions and trying to get some background on what are the trends and such that we are seeing around homelessness. And so where do we do it? We do it all throughout Hayes County, and you'll see that in a bit, how that stretched out this year a little better than we've been able to do it before. But we kind of seat that here in San Marcos because San Marcos is clearly, and you'll see that again, clearly the place where most of the work is centered. We are, so we are organized as part of THN, the Texas Homeless Network. It's the community of care of the rest of the state. We are included in that, and so there are 215 counties that they cover. We are one of those counties. We had 50 volunteers out that day, and out that day speaking to people, and 17 others who are working to do background stuff to make sure that we could do the best we could to find people and to speak with them on that day. So, real quick, before we get into the count, I want to say a couple of things. First, what the count can and cannot do for us. And what the count tells us is approximately the number of people who are experiencing homeless on that day, and it can only tell us, of course, about those whom we find on that specific day, right? So there may be some, many people who we don't find even on this specific day in January. It also can tell us about trends over time. You'll see some of that, some of the trends we can see because of these point-in-time counts, and the insights into the effectiveness of how we're doing in terms of our response to homelessness needs. What it can't tell us is the total number, right? And it can't tell us an exact number. You can't use that. However, the data can be used to help apply for funding from HUD and other resources. It's a valuable part of how the federal government reviews and gives out funding to deal with homelessness concerns. And it can't tell us how many people, of course, are kind of on the verge of being homeless or are precariously housed, right? People who are, people who are just on the edge and ready to go. And ready, HUD defines four types of homelessness that you're going to, we're going to talk about real quick, and then we're going to move into the pit count itself. First is hidden or invisible. So hidden or invisible homeless are the people who are couch surfing, staying with relatives, people who are in their cars and we don't see them, you know, who are working. They're usually working, usually people with jobs but don't have enough to meet their needs. They're the people, they're the invisible folks, and those are really hard to find on a pit count day, right? Those people are really difficult for us to identify and work with, especially because they are only considered unhoused if they are unhoused on that particular night, on January 20th. Even if they were unhoused the night before and they're housed on the 25th, they are now housed, according to the research, according to how the pit count works. now housed according to the research, according to how the pit count works. The second type is episodic. So, oh no, sorry, transitional. I read the wrong thing first. It's transitional homelessness. Transitional homelessness is people who are going through a transition in life and are temporarily unhoused. And again, there are many people in our, who may be homeless in the course of a year in this way, but unless it's happening on January 25th, we don't include, they're not included in the count, right? The third type of homelessness that, as HUD defines them, is episodic. I'm working on clicking fast enough here. There we go. So episodic means if a person has experienced three periods of homelessness within a year, like, it sounds pretty drastic to me, but it's how it's defined. Their circumstances are described as episodic, meaning they're going in and out of housing, in and out of housing throughout a single year. Usually, there are people with some other health issues that are leading to that, but jumping in and intervening in those periods is critical because it's really easy for these people to slip into a more permanently unhoused situation. The last type is chronic. And chronic homelessness is what we know and what we think of as homeless, right? It's the people we see on the street corners. It's the people who are walking, the people with backpacks, and, you know, the people that we really would say, these are the homeless. HUD, of course, has those four categories we talked about, but this is the one that's probably the most findable on the pit count day and the one that we identify as homeless in particular. And that leads us to Nancy.
So as you can see from the numbers, we have had an increase for 2024. We've been doing the pit count for five years, and we've had steadily some changes. That can mean one of two things. We may have had, been more effective in having our, what we call our hotspot mapping in advance and being able to send our volunteers to places that were, they were known for having traffic there, foot traffic from people or where police department or the sheriff's department might have pointed where they may have had a call on someone. In the 2024, you can see that we have the observations. Observations are those people that were non-approachable or were not willing to be talked to, but they fit the criteria HUD gives you guidelines on what you kind of look for, the, maybe the appearance and different things that they use as kind of the things where you would count them. So the count is strictly what it is. It's a head count for the 36, but that 36 is reflected in the 99 that are unsheltered. And then the other is the sheltered. In Hays County, the sheltered would include Hays Caldwell Women's Center, and it also includes the South Side, what they have in their transitional housing, and the B R 3 T Housing Stability Program that they're using with motels. So those are the three groups that submitted those numbers, and they did that on their own directly to T H N. Oh, I'm clicking, aren't I? Okay. That's scary. So we're going to talk a little bit about the map. We were able to show the map. Do you feel up to?
So as you can see, on the day of the count, most of the count was centered around San Marcos. We did send teams out all across the county. We had morning teams and afternoon teams. We did do four different sweeps. A majority of the count was conducted in San Marcos. We did go all the way up through Dripping Springs. We identified all the way through Kyle. But unfortunately, as you can see, the majority of the count is centered around San Marcos, and a lot of that has to do with the resources that are available here. So as I'm sure you're aware of what that means, the strain on the community. So I'm not sure if you would have any questions. We did try to identify more and more outline, but there's a lot more questions than answers, and I'm sure I can answer some of that for you.
So we were fortunate that we were able to access this map. When our surveyors do their survey on the day of the count, they're using the digital app, Counting Us. And so that automatically drops their location for where the surveys are taken, is how this map is created. When surveys are submitted, that goes directly to the Regional Command Center, and that creates this map. So again, you can see we've, Dripping Springs, a lot of it is when we can get a team out there and then maybe locate people that have moved on, those hidden homeless that Joshua mentioned, and people that are just, they can't stay much after daylight, they have to move. So they're pretty mobile, and it's hard to capture that. Our count takes place during daylight. We don't like sending volunteers out when it's dark. It's not safe for our, even though they're trained, they're not professional in that sense where they would be interacting with people in the dark. So we were there from like 7:30, between 7:30 and then 6:00 P. M. at night to get this One of the very key points in what we get from doing the surveys, and this is based on how they answer, it's not asked for documentation, it's just what they answer the question and how they answer the question. This is where we capture this information about these, what they call special populations or subpopulations. And so you can see the breakdown of the areas that are identified as those that generally will need more case management or more resources. Chronically homeless being those that, again, Joshua described, that are out for more than 12 months, and they also have some type of disability, whether it's mental, maybe it's some kind of drug abuse, whatever it is, they have that identified disability or yet to be identified, but it's very present. So just to remind you that one of the questions that surveyors ask that gives them an option when they do answer a question is, do you want to answer this? So they don't have to answer the question. So when you see this, it's not because anyone pressured them into giving an answer, they're not led into answering. They are giving every opportunity that they don't remember on some of the things that they're asked, or they prefer not to answer. So that leads us to what is showing up across the nation that supports the data. And a lot of this comes from what you're seeing, the trends and things from this type of count. Some areas do a biannual count. They'll do a summer count, especially up north. They'll do a summer count and a winter count, and then kind of average what they're saying. But Housing First is a proven model, and this is the model that HUD is funding. This is the model that HUD expects communities that are going to be receiving government funding, HUD funding, or that they follow this model. So the several studies have found that compared with the Treatment First model, Housing First approaches offer greater long-term housing stability, especially among people experiencing homelessness. When you're trying to stabilize someone and you're not putting them in a safe place to be stabilized, which is housing, just know that Housing First doesn't mean you just put them in housing and then say you're done. Housing First, the model for that, has the wraparound services. So when organizations are charged with the responsibility for someone who's receiving a permanent supportive housing grant or a transitional housing grant or some other funding that's putting them in this housing, case management is critical. That's what is the stabilizer. Does it always work? No. But the long-term data on this, it will show that the results are a lot greater. Part of the Housing First, too, is a diversion model. If you have people that are getting ready to enter into homelessness because of loss of their housing, then housing is critical. You need a way to keep those people housed. So again, it requires some designated funding or certain, you know, the ability to stabilize people in that way. Research supports that Housing First programs successfully house people with intersecting vulnerabilities. So you're talking about the most difficult people when we talk about the chronic. Those are the people that have been out the longest and usually have co-occurring disabilities. So those are the ones that you, they're costing you more than anybody else. When you look at the model for what, and I can send that to you, we asked T H N for a cost model for homelessness, and they sent us some figures. It's based on another study, but I can share those numbers with you. But it shows, and this was based on the 2023 count that she did the figure, it gives you the formula for how you could figure this based on what their disability was and what was being required for hospitalization and all types of other types of services, public Evidence from a systematic review of 26 studies indicates that Housing First program decreased homelessness by 88% and improved housing stability by 41% compared to Treatment First. So the data is there. That's what, this is what holds this up. When HUD points to this and they are requiring this, it's not because it's just a, something that was mandated as just a something, let's try, but it's been done over years and the data is there. Clients in stable housing experienced better quality of life and showed reduced hospitalization and emergency department use. So in your ultimate goal, when you're looking at a continuum of care for an area, you're wanting to go from places not meant for human habitation to stable housing. So all those components in there, and I know, y'all know, there's a lot of discussion that y'all have been engaged in, and we appreciate that for what you're doing and looking at that in San Marcos. The greater ask for us is, we're trying to, for the Coalition, we're trying to create a countywide conversation around this, a roundtable or what, we're still looking for the perfect name for this. But it's really to, for every town, every city to identify what we're calling a decision-maker or someone who has the ear of decision-makers, someone that would be recognized, say, for San Marcos. Who would you recognize as speaking for San Marcos if they were in a roundtable with people from all across the county? So we've had, a couple of cities have already identified their people to us, and so that's why we're making this part of our ask, and we hope that we will be able to include San Marcos in our roundtable. Commissioners Court, we've already made the presentation to them, and they're working on that as well. We've already had an initial conversation with a couple of the commissioners, and so we are moving forward with that. Do y'all have any questions for us?
When you mentioned more of the countywide, and Stephanie Brown, when she was showing the map, and there was, you know, a few located in dripping Kyle, Buta, Wimberly, y'all did outreach with like law enforcement agencies and nonprofit organizations to try to identify some hotspots in those areas, but, I mean, how confident are y'all on those numbers that we may have missed some folks?
With Dripping Springs being more of a corridor for, I would say, the hidden, we were in discussion with local law enforcement and the constables up there recently, and they're going to assist us better next year with the earlier counts, earlier and later, because what we're looking at is more of a transient community of car sleepers. And without having teams located and not many people up there able to help us, that we're not getting the same type of assistance down here that we're getting down in San Marcos and along the I-35 corridor. So, and with the 290 access that they have with different in and out, that we're looking at a different population up there. They're more of the bedroom community, and it's just a different type of situation than what we're seeing down here. I think in Wimberly, it's pretty, they were self-reported.
So our goal is to do a lot more advanced work with our hotspot mapping, which we can do to, again, to start early in the fall and start seeing what, where are people traveling, what kind of patterns, so we can establish some patterns. And then Stephanie did a wonderful job with the information that we had. Also, thanks to the HOT team here, they were critical for our maps. Sheriff's Department gave us some, it was old data, but at least it gave us some places. And we actually found, that's why, one of the reasons we found someone in Wimberly, because of something that had happened months ago, but it was worth sending our team back to a roadside park, and we just happened to find someone that day.
And for the public, the HOT team is the homeless outreach?
Yes.
Team?
Sorry.
And just to add, I added to that, our HOT teams, they were instrumental in helping identify hotspots within San Marcos. I feel like I have a high degree of confidence in the numbers in San Marcos because we knew where a lot of those places were, where the homeless were, because of our HOT teams and their outreach. So we were able to coordinate those efforts more, but it was in the other cities of the county, you know, I don't know if we had as good, you know.
Yeah, it's harder when you go somewhere that doesn't have a police force, and we're having, you know, we're still working with the sheriff's department to kind of understand the value of this and to help us just share information, but share it as we go through. So again, we'll approach them probably differently in the fall and see if we can kind of reestablish how that can really help. The officers don't have to do anything, they can just use, you know, the Counting Us app and drop a hotspot. So we're striving for that. The one other point that I didn't share, because these figures are not included in your numbers that show up for the Point-in-Time Count, is what's called the McKinney-Vento Report, and you should have both of those reports. We gave you last year's report.
Let's explain what that name means.
I'm going to. I was just explaining to y'all that what you're looking at, you've got your pages. The McKinney-Vento Report is the, McKinney-Vento was an act that was passed in Washington years ago to make sure that students weren't dropping through the cracks in schools and so that there was money allocated and services provided within public schools to give the other types of care that students that are unstable, unstably housed or at risk of being totally unhoused needed. So McKinney-Vento, because they collect their data at the time of enrollment, the numbers that you see on these are collected at the date of when enrollment starts in August for most of the school districts. But what we do is, and then they turn in their report, they have to submit their official report, their McKinney-Vento Report, in October of the school year. So by, things can change by January, so what we've asked of school districts is to kind of give us an update, give us their numbers as of January 1st in the year that we're doing the count. So the numbers that you see on the reports that you're looking at are, were pulled from January 1st by the school districts. You can see there were some changes in the 2023 numbers for San Marcos, and it's good the way they break it out. Again, they use all four categories of homelessness. We can only, when we're doing the adults for the point in time, we can only use unsheltered and sheltered. But for school districts, they can include, they're doubled up, which is the couch surfing or the invisible. And they can also use a motel hotel stay, which we use in our adult count, but it's an agency that's paying for their motel hotel stay. For these parents, that may be their only option for finding housing, is putting their family in a motel. And so they can be paying for themselves, and that counts with the school district. So just so that you can see the numbers and the breakdown, I wanted to make sure you had, and the board, we thought that you needed to kind of see what changes might have happened since 2023.
Are there questions, Counsel? I have one.
Okay.
On the bar chart.
Uh huh.
It's got the two shades of blue and the kind of gold color.
Right.
Okay. The observations counted as unsheltered, so the 36 is inside of the 99?
It is inside of the 99.
I thought you said that.
Yes. Yeah. Because we, you're, again, that's part of what HUD, you know, gives us the guidance when you're seeing someone like that, and they have the indicators that are enough for you to count them, the chances of them being, again, it's an uncertain way to collect the number, but it's what to collect the number, but it's what the best we can do sometimes. But it's generally pretty dependable when you're seeing somebody on a bike with their, you know, everything and their backpack on their back.
I just wanted to verify that.
Yes, ma'am.
It's.
Right, that's reflected in your, in your unsheltered count.
Okay. Other questions?
Just a couple of comments. Mayor, Reverend Sullivan, Nancy, Stephanie, and all the volunteers that helped with the pit count, thank you so much. I can't emphasize how important these pit counts are for your local community. It helps bring in federal resources and federal dollars. For example, last year's pit count, we were able to identify sixteen homeless veterans and we were able to use that data with the VA that we got sixteen housing vouchers in a partnership with the San Marcos Housing Authority. And we're hoping with the, the data from this pit count, we could possibly, we've already asked if we can get sixteen more, and these are things that you can measure. You know, these are, you know, getting our federal tax dollars in our community to address a rising need for homelessness in San Marcos. Things that, you know, the city can do, increase funding for organizations that provide case management for homeless folks. And then just like I said, thank you to the Homeless Coalition of Hayes County. One of the observations that I've made, being part in pit counts and just working with, with y'all with, with my job, helping with veterans and stuff, is the increased participation in churches and faith-based organizations and nonprofits. So it's been a community effort. In any way that the city can match those increased efforts, I'm fully supportive of.
And Jude was one of our volunteers. So we have, the volunteers have a three-hour shift and they go out at their, then they're assigned to an area. It's not just go, but they're given an area. Obviously, later in the day, you have to be really careful that you're not recounting people, so it's a little harder as you get later in the day. But it really, these numbers, what you see on the page becomes the official number registered with HUD. So when any of your service providers that, you know, are serving homeless are going after a grant and they're asked to show data, this is the data that upholds what they're asking for, shows where they're, validates the need and just, you know, that's, that's the official number. So you can see what the, you want to have as an effective count as possible. And so it does take a lot of manpower. So we'll be continuing to try to increase our volunteer base and get more, more people involved. There's always a spot for any of you council folks. We can always, you know, find a place for y'all.
And I would like to say that the intent is not to put the load onto San Marcos, but to use San Marcos as the example for the other cities in the county.
Exactly.
Y'all have provided a great example in leadership and, and I would like to point out that we, we definitely mentioned that to the commission and thank you.
But that's why it'll be important for y'all to be in the conversation when we pull this roundtable together, because you have the expertise and the experience and you've already traveled some of the miles that you've gone through this. And so rather than starting back at zero, you could help really look forward because the approach that works is a systematic approach. And for that to work, you have to have everybody in the conversation talking about what their part of it's going to be. Some of it for places that say they don't have a lot of homeless, maybe it's more diversion. Maybe they're seeing more people that are in need of rental assistance to keep them housed or creative ways to keep them from being evicted. So again, thank you for your time and I thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, thank you to, my pastor Sullivan. Thank y'all for leading the homeless coalition, the meetings and the effort. And the, the luncheon learns have been fabulous, so thank you for that. Thanks to everyone who's part of that coalition, the social service and other agencies, and thanks to all the volunteers that went out and made the, the pit count more, more accurate this year.
Yes.
Because that's what we need.
It, it is reflected, so thank y'all.
All right. Ms. Reyes, is there anything else, anything you need from us?
No, ma'am.
All right.
That covers it, thank you.
Moving on to item three, Ms. Trevina.
Receive a staff presentation on a six-month pilot program, which would expand the Spin Scooter service area to include a service area east of IH thirty-five to extend the Spin Scooter service hours to twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and receive council direction.
Ms. Reyes.
This topic of the next presentation is our multimodal Spin Electric Scooter Transportation Program. In addition to utilization, we will present staff's proposal to expand the service area east of IH thirty-five and extend operational hours to a twenty-four-hour, seven-day service model. This initiative aims to deliver a menu of benefits, including increasing mobility and connectivity within our community, providing multimodal transportation options in traditionally underserved areas, and providing an additional transportation option for third-shift workers, students, and other community members. I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Charles Campbell, Multimodal Parking Initiatives Manager and Public Works, who's going to provide the presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel and mayor. Charles Campbell, I'm the Multimodal Parking Initiatives Manager for the City of San Marcos. Thank you for letting me present today. Purpose of this presentation is to give you an overview of the performance of the Spin Electric Scooter Program and also to get your recommendation for expanding the Spin Scooter Service Area to east of I-35 and to extend the current service hours of the electric scooter program to twenty-four-seven. Little background on the program, on September seventh, twenty-twenty-one, San Marcos and Texas State University executed a shared mobility contract with Spin Electric Scooters for a limited service area. And March first of twenty-twenty-four, Spin Scooters submitted a proposal for expanding the scooter service area east of thirty-five. On March seventh, twenty-twenty-four, the staff conducted a site visit of the recommended area with the goal of ensuring that the route was a safe transition route from the east side of thirty-five to the west side of thirty-five and to review the recommended deployment zones of where the scooters will be placed. On March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, Spin submitted an additional proposal to extend the operating hours to twenty-four-seven. Just as an overview of background of the current performance of the program and historical, these are twenty-twenty-two numbers versus twenty-twenty-three numbers. The trips are the actual scooter rides, as you would call them. You can see there's definitely been an uptick in ridership from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. And I also like to highlight the fact that the, along with, you know, the multimodal use of an electric scooter, there's also an additional, you know, carbon O2 savings that incurs too. And that's based on a formula that looks at, you know, the unit size of measurement of what a vehicle would admit as far as CO2 versus the same mileage being utilized for a scooter. There's only been one reported safety incident and that was reported in twenty-twenty-three. There were no safety incidences reported in twenty-twenty-two. I'd also like to report that this is a zero-cost program. Spin derives a revenue from user usage. Also like to advise that it's a revenue generating program for the city as well, too, that we do get a small percentage of each of the individual rides that occur. Also like to highlight the current safety measures that are in place for the scooter program. There are restricted ride zones currently for the scooters. There's currently slow zones where the scooters can't exceed a certain miles per hour, and that's ten miles per hour. There's also front and rear lighting on the scooters and an overall restricted speed limit of fifteen miles an hour. This is the current area, which you're seeing on display here, of the current service area. As you can see, it does not extend to the east side of thirty-five. On the next slide, oops, I'm sorry, one too many. If you can see, there's a small green section on the east side of thirty-five. This is the pilot area that we would like to deploy, the pilot program at. Here's a sort of zoomed-in model where you can actually see that service area that we're This is the route that a scooter would take if they were traveling from the east side of thirty-five to the west side of thirty-five. And here are some of the recommended deployment zones that we're recommending on the east side of thirty-five. We're coordinating with the transit department to put our deployment zones at current bus stops, so there can be a unification of different forms of transportation. So if you're getting off the bus and you need to continue a trip that's not feasibly walkable, then you'd have an opportunity to hop on a scooter or vice versa. You're late for the Texas State bus and you need to get to class and you can't wait fifteen minutes for the next bus to get there, you'll have the ability to hop on a scooter and get to where you need to go. These are just some sample areas of what we think the deployment zones could look like. We prefer the picture on the left, that's sort of a painted corral area that shows what the corral area is for, helps keeps the scooters a little more organized. Sometimes there can be issues with scooters winding up halfway across sidewalks and whatnot. So we'd like to roll out the program with the idea that, you know, there needs to be some better management on Spin's part of corralling the scooters in these deployment This is from Spin Scooter, you know, the, to further meet the transportation needs of residents of the city and students at the university, Spin is requesting an extension of operating hours to twenty-four-seven. Spin believes that this will be beneficial to the city and university communities. We've also included information on cities that have lived through the data points below and have materialized the benefits of an extension of operating hours. And here's some examples of current Spin locations that are in cities that have universities as part of their dynamic within the city. So there's several large universities that, and cities with large universities that currently deploy Spin scooters on a twenty-four-seven basis. I'd like to highlight one that's not on here. It's part of Spin's parent company, which is Bird. Bird and Lime are twenty-four-seven in the city of Austin, and they do service the University of Texas campuses as well, too. So we do have a local partner that does offer the Spin Scooter Service twenty-four-seven. All right, and some of our justification on why we believe that we should move to twenty-four-seven operations. There's been feedback from residents and Texas State students on the need for it. We believe it will increase utilization. We also understand that there are new Spin safety measures in place that weren't formally in place that can allow us to open this to expanding the service area and opening it up for rides overnight. In addition, there's only been one safety measure and that was reported in twenty-twenty-three, and it wasn't even after dark. It was after seven AM, so it, it didn't center around, you know, low visibility or any of those other concerns. Within the pilot program, we'll track utilization and safety events, incidences, just to ensure that the program's performing as it should. And again, it would be a zero-cost program. This just gives a graph, it was a graph supplied by Spin Scooters on sort of what we could expect as far as volume goes in the additional hours. Currently, the service runs from five AM to twelve AM, so the expansion would give us from twelve AM up to five AM. They estimate that's going to be about additional five thousand rides annually. How they come up with that formula is that Spin Scooters actually, if you tried to get one and ride one after twelve AM, you can open the app, you can scan the unit, it won't allow you to activate the unit, but Spin does record those app potential activations. So they can see over our historical period of time how many people tried to activate the app after twelve AM. They use that in combination with other similar-sized cities with similar-type operations. Also justification for the twenty-four-seven operation is their new Safe Start option that they have that you can deploy. This is an option that in hopes would protect and make sure that the person is sober if they're activating the unit. They have to be able to type in a key word or two without making an error in order to activate the unit and begin the process of starting the unit for use. In addition to that, the units do come with front and rear LED lights for visibility. So there's some safety measures on the scooter as well, too. Staff did also consult with the San Marcos Police Department and the San Marcos Fire Department. They did review the proposal and did not express any objections to that. Benefits, it's a zero-cost program, can increase utilization and micro-mobility. It's an alternative to traffic congestion and it reduces the number of vehicles on the road, provides multimodal transportation options in underserved areas, provides an additional transportation option for third-shift workers, students, and other community members, provides an equitable form of transportation, it's a lower-cost alternative than owning a car, it reduces the carbon footprint throughout the city, and it does have an economic benefit for the city of San Marcos. What we're asking for and staff's recommendation is an approval on a pilot program for the proposed area east of thirty-five and to open the operating hours to twenty-four-seven. And we are now asking for questions, feedback, concerns that you may have that I might be able to answer for you.
Okay, if you could go back to the five photos that says route from east of IH thirty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, do y'all have questions, comments?
I have a question. Can you just finish?
Well, I've given him time to get back to that slide. Y'all go ahead.
I'll go too.
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez, turn on your microphone.
I'm just curious, since we talked about maybe people that have been drinking a little bit too much, is it possible for someone to get a, driving under the influence of a scooter? It is, okay.
Absolutely.
The concern I have is now that you're going to be twenty-four-seven, what's the possibility of more people trying to drive those bikes?
It, it is a possibility, yes, but do note currently that the scooters do run late into the evening right now. I know it's not when bars close, but I'm sure there are people that have gotten out of bars before midnight. We'll put in slow zone measures and we can do that universally if we'd like to. If we have a concern that, you know, when the bars get out at two or even that twelve AM to five AM period, we could deploy the Safe Start measure and we can make the whole service area a slow zone, so we can limit the speed that they're traveling.
Yeah, one time we were open, HEB was open twenty-four hours and other stores, you know, it's, you know, they're pretty much closed at twelve o'clock at night. Now, that's a question I had, I appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, when I, when I first saw this, my first thought was, how are they going to get safely from the east side of thirty-five back over? Because people have complained to me about bicycling, that it's not easy. And I'm, I'm a little dubious about number two, but my question is, do we feel that these are intuitive enough or do we need to provide something that lets people know this is the way you need to travel? I'm not sure what alternate ways it would be, but.
Yeah, we looked at the route and we actually walked this route. I would say it's visually intuitive, but you're right. We can look at different measures on maybe putting sidewalk markings in, sort of directional arrows, reflectives.
Little pictures of scooters?
Little pictures of scooters, exactly, with sort of, you know, the wind flowing behind it with arrows saying, go this way, absolutely.
But I, but on number two, that looks like that's just a drive lane. Is there a sidewalk there?
Yes, ma'am, there is.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm good on that one. On the slide that was showing, it was showing number of rides twenty-four hours a day on a twenty-four-hour clock, and it showed rides and the timeframe that they're not open now. Is that where you were saying it's when they're, they're clocking people that are, despite, that are trying to get, get a ride and it's not letting them? That's how we're capturing that data?
That's part of, that's part of the formula they used. It's only one component of the formula they used. The other part was comparable cities during that time period.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Gleason.
All right, thanks, mayor. And good observation.
And good observation on number two there, you know. One of the biggest problems that we have on the east side is that, is that multimodal option of getting back and forth. And Mayor, that visualization of number two is exactly how I have to get back and forth across on Highway 80 also, and at 123 down at the other crossing. So all three major crossings of the interstate are exactly like that, including having to potentially cross the traffic because it's down the middle because of the turnaround. So it just, it just points out how complicated and how dangerous it is going to be. You know, I have some reservations about all that just because of this, of encouraging even more late-time crossing at some of these dangerous intersections. And a lot of people don't realize there's pedestrians coming and going from there. I see that all the time. But there's a lot of students over there, and I would like to see it expanded to the rest of the east side, including Sunset Acres and my neighborhood. We will fortunately have that path, that shared-use path underneath IH 35 that will impact that a little bit. The one thing I want to make sure that happens here is that Walmart gets included in this in some capacity if we, as we expand over to the east side. You know, Walmart's such a big part of just, you know, whatever. And hopefully, I wish they were still 24 hours a day like Mr. Gonzalez is pointing out. But I'm fine with the map for now. I like to see the expansion. And I would like to maybe potentially at least review those late-time incidences if we do expand of a year from now, what that looked like, and maybe potentially go into a slow speed all hours at midnight or something till in the morning. So I appreciate the expansion, and yeah, and it just goes to highlight, I ride my bike back and forth across, and it's like, it's, it's a, it's a bit of a risk-taking. So I appreciate all staff's time on this.
I will add that, you know, being that this is a six-month pilot, we're going to look at utilization and safety incidents. We will report back on those. Because our goal would be to expand in different areas down to Blanco Garden, include the Walmart and whatnot, we believe that this currently was sort of the safest crossing route at the moment. And as those things get more developed, that shared-use path, we will be coming back and hopefully being able to expand this program more globally across the east side.
And I don't, there isn't anything you're going to be able to do at that intersection, right? And I have, and I have crossed at that intersection several times there at Ocarina that there's really nothing you can do. It's the only way back and forth, and there's just so many people east of 35 there, you know, who don't realize it. So thanks, thanks for staff for working on this, and I'm looking forward to the expansion.
Lot of students living in apartments on Ocarina.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, a lot. Anyone else? Turn on your microphone if you want to talk. Go ahead, Mr. Scott.
I couldn't remember. Do, do we ensure that those units, if something happens to them? Or is it just their problem, if they get stolen or destroyed or?
That's solely Spin's responsibility.
Okay, so we're not, we don't have to worry about that.
No, my role is to just oversee the contract and ensure they're living within the framework of the contract.
Yeah, it's their thing, we're just, we determine where we allow them to go, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so I need to go around and ask, and it's two questions. One is, do you want to do the east side? And separately, do you want to do the 24 hours? And, and I'll go first and say I'm a yes on both of those. Mr. Scott says he's a yes on both of those. Mr. Prather?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Others?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, I'm okay on both.
So we are all yeses. We will see how this.
I'm a yes, ma'am.
Ms. Garza, join us?
I'm outside, I'm just getting over a cosmetic episode, but I'll be in soon.
Okay. All right, so yes, and we'll see how this works out. I think there's going to be a lot of happy people on the east side, that they'll have opportunity to use a scooter from that side, probably coming over to the other side.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Reyes, nothing else you need from us? All right, then we'll move on to item four.
The City Council will convene Executive Session pursuant to the following section of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding proposed cost-sharing agreement for a construction of a wastewater treatment plant. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding officer-involved shooting on April 11, 2024.
Looking for a motion to go into executive session.
There's a move.
I have a motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. We'll vote on that. Mr. Venia.
Okay, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza? Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
And Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes 6 to 0.
We're going into executive session at 4:15. Council, let's take. We have returned from our executive session, which closed out at 5:44. It is now time for question-and-answer session with the press and public. However, I believe the person who signed up, Mr. Venia, you so does not.
No, ma'am, we do not see them.
Not here, okay. All right, in that case, I will. Do I need to ask if there's anybody here, Mr. Venia, Mr. Gary? If there's anybody else?
Q and A.
Okay. Then it is now time to adjourn, and I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. It's really good if you have your microphone on when you do those. Mr. Venia, let's vote to adjourn.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason, Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
And Mr. Scott. Motion passes 4 to 3, 4 to 0.
All right, and we've concluded this meeting at 5:47. We'll be back for.